Don't say what the money is. You old blow sheet, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, we ask about schools and all, whatever it be.
Okay, you want to do that?
Yeah.
You got it.
This one.
John, you want six chairs or you want to stay here?
What do you think?
Fifty.
Eight hundred.
John, you got experience switching votes in your life.
Not tonight.
How you say, not tonight?
Tell us overrated, by the way.
You want information?
Thirty seconds.
Not tonight.
It says after we read the resume. You good to go? Good evening. The Monday, January 14th, Common Council Meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Matthew Weesaugh, Chairman of the Poughkeepsie Bay and Potawatomi. Thank you, sir, for coming. Yep, you would.
Thank you for the opportunity. That's great. Dear Lord, thank you, Father, for another wonderful day that you've given to us. And as we pause and just relax and humble ourselves before your greatness, we just ask you to be with those that serve, that you would grant them wisdom, understanding, and empathy. Give them the strength to do what needs to be done even in the difficult situations to serve the citizens of this great city to the best of their abilities. Ask, Lord, that you would continue to bless this city, this county, this state, and the United States of America for this asking in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. And Happy New Year. This is the first formal council meeting of 2019. Ms. Fowler, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Burden?
Here.
Councilmember Teshka?
Here.
Vice President?
Yeah.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Boardy?
Here.
Councilmember Gurley?
Here.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the December 10th, 2018, and January 7th, 2019. Meeting minutes of the Common Council have found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the subcommittee.
Second? I'm fair.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Before we move into special business, a little special business my own. I would like to thank former Vice President Oliver Davis for his service to the Common Council as Vice President for two years, three years?
Anthony.
Three years. Thank you so much. I would like to thank Gavin Furley for his commitment to Chairman Holthaus at that time period as well. Thank you, sir. And for everybody in the audience, I'd like to recognize Vice President Karen White in her new role. Thank you. And Chairman Holthaus, John Boardy. Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, motion on the special business, the other item there?
Special business, yes, ma'am.
The public record of the St. Joe Superior Court establishes that the remaining parties in South Bend Common Council versus South Bend City Administration, St. Joe Superior Court, were ordered to complete mediation on or before December 31st of 2018. The parties have complied with the order. Under the rules of the Indiana Supreme Court, mediation sessions shall be confidential, and the confidentiality of mediation cannot be waived. Under the Indiana Open Door Laws, the Common Council can either accept or reject any mediation proposal only at a public meeting and by a majority vote. Because the existence and/or terms of any proposed mediation settlement are confidential, but the Council vote on acceptance or rejection of any proposed mediation settlement must be made at a public meeting, I move to reject any settlement agreement that may have been proposed at mediation in order to complete the public record on the court's order to mediate.
Second. There's a motion in the second. Ms. Fowler, would you please do roll call?
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurley?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Councilmember Burden and Councilmember Teshka. With that, we'll move on to special business, Resolution 1902. Ms. Fowler?
1902. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, calling for enactment of legislation addressing hate crimes in the state of Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a presentor or presentator? I'm told for the record, there's two. And which two would they be?
Which two?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Joe Burden, South Bend, Common Council Member, District 4, 201 West North Shore. Just some preliminary remarks before we actually read the document, if that's possible. Your diligence on that. First and foremost, with regard to this resolution, we'd like to, my cosponsor, Councilmember John Boardy and I, would like to recognize the efforts of Marcy Bauer and Bob Pfefferman, who approached us initially with this idea for a council resolution and to do it in a timely manner as the General Assembly is kicking off their legislative year. We'd also like to recognize, and in their role of inviting us to put together this resolution, they also provided us with outstanding sample documents. And we had the assistance of our attorney, Bob Palmer, who reviewed those extensively with us and made terrific recommendations, as well as Bianca Torado, our deputy clerk. So we want to thank you two both specifically for your assistance in crafting what is before us. With regard to the administration, I don't know if she is here or not, but I'd like to give a shout out to Christina Brooks, specifically from our diversity and inclusion officer, for her work in reviewing this legislation, but her work that she does 365 days a year, that really makes our city a model with regard to some of these issues that we're going to be addressing by way of this resolution. We do lead, in fact, do lead in the state of Indiana in terms of our policies and the direction that we have been going. And that is, really has been guided and shepherded with, I think, an outstanding leader, Mayor Pete. So I'd also like to thank his office and the coordination of his schedule and his presence here tonight to speak and address this. And then, I think, really, you know, how do you say, most especially, most especially? You know, exclamation mark, exclamation mark. There are members who have served in the General Assembly, current and former members, who've been on this issue for over 20 years. So two decades of work has preceded what we're presenting tonight, I think it's really fair to say. And in terms of leadership on that issue, I do want to recognize the members of the Black Caucus in both the House and the Senate. We are standing on their shoulders tonight and their body of work. And I am particularly grateful for their leadership and their tenacity and just their endurance. Two decades is a long time. And I'm hoping that we are on the cusp of passing this this year. Last, so that's a little bit of origin information for you. I would want to quickly highlight, I don't want to stand in the way of the document. It's very extensive, and I think it speaks for itself. But I do want to highlight some content points before my fellow cosponsor, I just about elevated him. Councilmember Boardy actually addresses that. But some content points. We're looking for clear guidelines that will be set within our criminal code with passage of this legislation within the General Assembly this year. And most especially is inclusionary and comprehensive language. So I'll let those two points, as we read the documents, hopefully they'll stand out. And the last point I want to hit is where does this go from here? You will see within the document itself, we will be asking our clerk's office to transmit this to all Indiana state legislators, not just our representatives, but all of them, right? There already have been bills proposed in both the Senate and the House. You can track that online, of course, as council members, but the general public as well. But we want to make sure that this will stand as a poke, a flag, a wave, you know, an exclamation. We're up here, we're tracking this on the behalf of the City of South Bend and St. Joe County, and, you know, we want this done, and we want it done this year. So that's going to be delivered to all of our legislators' email boxes. I know that there are some members here in our audience tonight, and even council members, who will be making their way down to the State House as part of their prerogative, you know, to speak on important issues. And then, we're considering this open source document as well, that as it goes live, it's signed by the mayor as it goes live, that other boards and commissions, other elected bodies, whether it's our neighbors in Mishawaka, the county council, but just take this document, run with it. Take this document as an individual, you know, on behalf of your neighbor, your neighborhood, and your city. Take this document and ask others to read it and be familiar with it and then to act however they are called in their heart. And then the last piece that I want to emphasize is that if citizens regret or not being available tonight, or not even aware of tonight's resolution, that can happen right over the busy holidays and just with our busy lives. I just want to emphasize that this is only the beginning. We're really in the early phase of the legislative process. They, you know, just convened, for those who aren't aware, a real key date is February 26th. That's the crossover. So anything that originates in the Senate, you know, has to go to the House, and anything that originates in the House has to go to the Senate, and then, you know, you work out the compromise between. So we have about a month, is what I want to frame this as, as kind of a go time for anyone who is tracking and following this issue and wants to passionately advocate for it on behalf of the state of Indiana and our citizens. And then, I hold by what's known as Sunday Day. The very last day of a legislative session is April 29th, that we will have something truly to celebrate by the time that that hits and comes around in this legislation. So I told you I wouldn't get in the way of it, but I thought there were some important points to hit. And we have several individuals tonight who will speak to this. And, but I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Boardy.
Thank you.
And thank you.
John Boardy, South Bend City Councilman at Large, 1029 Claremont Drive, South Bend. The resolution itself. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, calling for the enactment of legislation addressing hate crimes in the state of Indiana. Whereas, the City of South Bend is proud of and celebrates the diversity of its citizens and is a priority for our community to welcome and promote diversity amongst its citizens, visitors, and businesses. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council desires to publicly declare its condemnation of discrimination in any form and to encourage people of varying and diverse backgrounds to call South Bend and St. Joseph County within the broader South Bend Elkhart region in the state of Indiana their home. And whereas, by definition, hate crimes cause damage more extensive than suffering of the specific victim because they serve to terrorize entire groups of people. Therefore, the terror associated with hatefully motivated speech, actions, and/or crimes targeting groups based on characteristics that include, but are not limited to, religion, national origin, ancestry, citizenship status, color, race, age, sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation, disability, medical condition, status as a public safety official, or service in the armed forces of the United States, or association with any recognizable group or affiliation, or similar factors is such that these crimes should be addressed specifically in Indiana's criminal code. And whereas, 45 states and the District of Columbia have enacted hate crime legislation, and Indiana is one of only five states in the United States that does not have such legislation. And whereas, being one of only five states without such legislation diminishes the reputation of the state of Indiana in general, along with the reputations of each of its political subdivisions, damaging our ability to attract and retain the best individuals, businesses, and workforce to reside in and enhance our state.
And whereas, statewide legislation addressing hate crimes will promote a welcoming and safe environment for every resident and visitor of our state, allowing Indiana to signal its commitment to diversity and freedom through the advanced protections and increased penalties associated with comprehensive hate crime legislation. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council maintains that the future success of South Bend and its surrounding cities and towns depends upon promoting a secure, safe, and diverse environment for all residents and visitors, free of the fear associated with hatefully motivated speech, actions, and/or crimes. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council desires to join with the legislative bodies of other cities and towns who have already passed or soon will pass resolutions in support of enacting statewide legislation addressing hate crimes and wishes to align with the growing number of over 700-plus businesses, not-for-profits, educational institutions, and faith communities across Indiana calling for this needed change. And whereas, the South Bend Common Council agrees with Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, who has stated that no law can stop evil, but we should be clear that our state stands with the victims and their voices will not be silenced. It is my intent that we get something done this legislative session so Indiana can be one of 46 states that hate crime legislation and not one of the five without it. And whereas, the purpose of the resolution is to express the policy and/or intent of the Common Council, now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1. The South Bend Common Council supports the need for clear, inclusionary, and comprehensive statewide hate crime legislation and urges the Indiana General Assembly to pass such legislation in the 2019 legislative session. Section 2. The clerk of the City of South Bend is directed to cause this resolution to be delivered to all members of the Indiana General Assembly and Governor Holcomb upon passage. Section 3. The mayor of South Bend is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Approved, okay, approved this day. What I'd like to do now that closes our presentation as petitioners.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we do have a couple of letters that we'd like to include, read, and then also include in the record.
Okay. Okay, for the record, the first one is from the Neighborhood Resources Connection. Here, members of the South Bend Common Council, on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Neighborhood Resources Connection, we are writing this letter to express NRC's unanimous support of Resolution 1902, calling for the enactment of legislation addressing hate crimes in the state of Indiana. We believe it is time to join the other 45 states which already passed hate crimes laws. According to the FBI, over 500 bias hate crimes were reported by the Indiana cities and towns and universities from 2008 to 2016. The true number is likely higher since major cities failed to report incidents for several years because reporting is not mandatory. In 2016, Jody Henderson, an Afghanistanian war veteran, was found beaten to death and lying in the street in a South Bend neighborhood. The motivation for this vicious murder, Mr. Henderson, was gay. The crime was murder, but the motivation was hate for his sexual orientation. These crimes have the power to send threatening and intimidating messages to entire communities of people, residents of our neighborhoods and city. We believe this is much-needed legislation, but yet there is still resistance in the state legislature, as evidenced by the January 2nd South Bend Tribune viewpoint, "Can Thoughts Be a Crime?", submitted by four of our state representatives. Their misunderstanding and therefore misrepresentation of hate crimes legislation is quite troubling. We commend the Common Council for taking action on this critically important action. Signed respectfully, Diana Hess, the Executive Director, and Kaya Young, the Board President.
Thank you, John. And we all interface with the director and the neighborhoods that associate with the Neighborhood Resource Center. So we thought that would be important to share with you all as peer electeds on the council. In addition, pivoting off of that, I also would like to enter into the public record. I will not read this, but it will be available online. Is a counter viewpoint, if you would, by Patrick Pierce, a professor at St. Mary's College. He wrote a viewpoint Saturday, January 12th that appeared in the South Bend Tribune titled, "Talk Responsibly on Biased Crime Laws." I'd like to enter that to the record as an opportunity for the members of the public and for council members to reference that. It's an excellent counter viewpoint in my estimation, in our estimation. The last piece, and this is only three short paragraphs, but we've been having people reach out to us, you know, already in support, and there's already been letters and things that have been sent down to the General Assembly. One that I would like to bring forward as the representative from the 4th District, specifically a letter that was brought to my attention by my neighbors to the north. Both the University of Notre Dame and St. Mary's College, as well as other university college presidents, have signed a joint letter that is, as I said, being communicated to the General Assembly. And I'd like to actually read this because I think there's some significant points in it, you know, for our consideration as a community. So this letter was crafted by Dr. Mark McCoy. He's the president of DePaul University. And I'd like to read it, please, into the record. As presidents of colleges and universities in the great state of Indiana, we write in support of strong hate crime legislation and join regional business groups who call for law which would authorize judges, quote, "to enhance penalties against criminals who harm others based on their disability, race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity." We stand with Governor Holcomb when he says, "No law can stop evil, but we should be clear that our state stands with the victims and their voices will not be silenced." For that reason, is my intent that Indiana be one of 46 states with hate crimes legislation, not one of five states without it. We call upon our elected representatives to act now in support of all Hoosiers, regardless of appearance, location, orientations, or religious beliefs. Indiana is home to some of the nation's most respected colleges and universities and is a state with wonderful assets and a welcoming spirit. This is a powerful opportunity to make certain that our students and citizens are afforded the same protections they are in all but five other states. The years the students spend in college are important and impactful. Young people from across the state, the nation, and the world come to our campuses to learn, to live and learn, and to understand more about how to live in an increasingly complex and diverse world. It is our job as college presidents to ensure that we create a fertile environment for those lessons to take root. It is our responsibility to make certain that each student feels welcome, wanted, and able to do their best work. The very future of our country depends upon this effort. We commend the governor for his stand and join him in calling on the Indiana General Assembly to enact hate crimes legislation for the good of all Hoosiers. And it's my understanding that only the Association of Private Universities and Colleges, but also our public institutions statewide also signed on to this letter.
Thank you.
And close our presentation.
Thank you, Chairperson Burden and Chairperson Boardy. Appreciate all that you presented to us in evidence. At this time, I'll turn it back to council. Any comments? We'll start with the 2nd District.
Question.
You have questions?
You have any comments now?
Comments or questions? You have questions? We'll start with questions. Any questions? Then we'll go to council.
Even if the public?
We'll do some.
Afterwards?
Yeah, afterwards.
Okay.
Is that all right? Or you want to do?
No, I'm fine.
Just want to again thank you for your leadership in bringing this. Much needed. And look forward to supporting any continued advocacy to bring this statewide.
Ms. Burden?
Yes, I would like to say it is indeed a privilege to be a part of such a movement for the city council to take a stand to push for, you know, the stopping of hate crimes in the state of Indiana. So I'm very proud and pleased for you, Councilwoman Burden and Councilmen Boardy, to take the lead and continue to look forward to the progression of what's happening in the state of Indiana. So thank you so much for this profound movement.
Thank you for bringing this tonight. And it's an issue that, Councilwoman Burden, as you find out, there's a lot of work that's been done already on it. A lot of discussion's been had. I've had a lot of conversations over the last, you know, couple of weeks about this. And, you know, a lot of folks that I've talked with are not in favor. And I asked for, you know, some sound arguments. And at the core, I think we can all agree that a crime that's motivated by the fact that somebody's different than you seems, not seems, but is, more heinous. that somebody's different than you seems, not seems, but is more heinous than a crime that is simply motivated out of opportunity or something like that. Tagging the wall of a building is different from spray painting a swastika on a synagogue, right? We all instinctively know that. And so thank you for bringing this, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you for, again, leading this charge. On the eve of Dr. King's official birthday, which is tomorrow, I think it's highly appropriate that we vote on this tonight. And I think this is something to send a message to our state legislators. So many times in the past, it seemed like it was going to pass at the state level, but then somebody brought up some interesting idea and changed it, and it failed. It is my hope that this year that victory shall take place in the state because it's high time that Indiana joined. I mean, when Mississippi and Alabama and some of the other southern states have already proved and passed this, it's embarrassing that the state of Indiana has not done that. People talk about those states, and they have done their share of crimes, and history has recorded that. But Indiana also has its own challenges and issues that have started since, and I think this is a way where we can now say that it's time for us to move forward and that we can lead that instead of being on the end of everything. We have to lead this, and so, again, this is a great thing for us to move forward with. So thank you, and thank all those who have participated and who will speak tonight because it's time. Injustice anywhere, it's injustice everywhere, and so it's time for us to have some justice tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on this issue, and thank you for everyone coming out to support it.
Yes, I would like to thank Councilwoman Jill Broden and Councilman John Vorty for bringing this resolution before us. I'm very proud of the work that we've done, and it's really somewhat sad that we, in 2019, that we're still addressing hate within our society, within our nation. I really am humbled that the Indiana Black Caucus, that they have dealt with this for 20 years and they're still moving forward. I'm very hopeful that the work and the resolution that will be sending from our South Bend Common Council will really add weight to the work that they have done, and also the work that's being done throughout the state of Indiana. I'm proud to state that I'm a member of Delta Sigma Theta National Sorority, the South Bend Anonymy Chapter. On February 26th, we, throughout the state of Indiana, we will be having what is called Delta Days at the state Capitol. And one of the position papers that we will be presenting is dealing with hate crime. And we are very committed to really working very closely with our elected officials. We probably will have 60-some Deltas, as we are called, that will be really dealing with this issue, and hopefully we'll have a positive outcome. I'm encouraged that the governor has made some very strong statements, and we will hold him and other elected officials accountable for ensuring that Indiana will become one of those states that has passed such an enactment of law so that we won't have to deal with hate within our community, which we know we will, but we have some laws in which that we can deal with it and hold those individuals accountable for their acts of hatred within our society and within our state. So again, thank you so much. I wish to thank all of you who are in the audience for your work and also being present as we move this particular resolution forward.
Thank you, Vice President White. I'll just conclude, and we'll turn it over to the public for a comment. It was years ago that my three colleagues to the left of me, we voted for the GLBT ordinance change in South Bend, and that was long overdue. You know, we just did the pledge tonight, "Justice for All," is part of that line, and we truly need to live by that. And, you know, thank you, Ms. Broden, Mr. Vorty, for your work on this and everybody else's work on this. You know, when you read that, you know, we're down to the last five states, we don't want to be the last five states. And I take pride in South Bend being a leader, and it has come a long way with changes in administration and, no disrespect to old administrations, and council members coming on that we may change, we move forward. I remember years ago, there was a phrase that came up by the senior perolik, "Forward-thinking communities include everybody." And we need to do that, and we need to send that message downstate. Years ago, we did a couple of resolutions in the past with my council members to my left, and I was told before by Legal that, oh, we don't send messages downstate. That's not what we should do. And I really pushed to say, no, we're going to do that. And one was on the, I believe, the Religious Freedom Act, whether you agreed or not, but we did send a message downstate on that, and with the purpose of, we represent people in the city of South Bend, and when you hear strongly for them, we need to use our position on council to send that message. While it's just a resolution, it means a lot when you can send that downstate or send it off to the US Congress or Senate, and we've done those in the past. And I'm very proud of that precedent that we started, that this community that we can send downstate as elected officials, the right message that Indiana should follow. So with that, we will open it up to the public. For anybody wishing to speak in favor of this special, very special, resolution, please come to the podium. I see one young gentleman moving his way forward. Yes, sir, state your name and address.
Thank you, Pete Buttigieg, still mayor of South Bend with offices on the 14th floor of this building. I promise to be brief. I did want to take the opportunity to add my support. I want to thank the council for taking up this issue and the sponsors for their leadership. I appreciate the acknowledgement of Christina Brooks, our Diversity and Inclusion Officer, who I saw just a little while ago. She unfortunately had to be at another community meeting, but I know this is very important to her, as it is to all of us in the office and the administration. We believe that this is not the first time that South Bend can be a little bit ahead of the rest of Indiana, and we hope that by stepping out in front on this issue, it's one more consideration for the Indiana General Assembly to do the right thing. It is long past time for Indiana to join most of the rest of the United States on this issue. And as was eloquently said before, this is not about legislating thought. This is about sending a message that harm coming to people for reasons of hate is doubly bad and doubly harmful to our community. As to whether there is a need for this, I believe there always was, but there is a national increase, as spotty as the data is, there is a clear pattern of a national increase and an increase here in our state in hate crimes and hate incidents. And we're not here to apportion blame for that, we're here to come together around the need for that to change. If there's any shred of anything convincing in the objections that have been made to this legislation, I think it comes from the idea of freedom, because our society and our country is, to our credit, unusually accommodating of the idea that people should be able to say or believe what they will, so much so that we protect people's ability to say and think detestable things. But it would be a very narrow idea of freedom that thinks that this means that we cannot take action on hate crime, because hate crime is about harm to other people. It's not just about what you think, it is about what you do. And I would argue that freedom from hate is more important than freedom to hate. That is the conclusion that most states in our country have drawn, and I hope ours will as well. It's also uplifting to see so many members of the community here to support this resolution, because I think it reflects the diversity that is the strength of our community. And it is very much South Bend values to state that whoever you are and whatever you are like, you should be able to feel safe in this community, that no one should live and no one should walk in fear in South Bend because of what they believe, how they worship, who they love, where they're from, what they look like, or any other such consideration. And so I hope that the council will take this opportunity, and I will enthusiastically sign it as one more way to send a message that hate has no home in South Bend, Indiana. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello.
Good evening. My office is at 305 West Madison. Thanks for allowing me to speak here this evening in support of this very important resolution. I'm the rabbi of Temple Beth El, the Reform Jewish Temple here in town, and I have more members here this evening than I usually have at my services, so I'm thinking perhaps we'll meet here every second and fourth Monday, if you don't mind. You're all welcome to join. This resolution supports the passage of a hate or bias crimes bill by the Indiana Legislature. This bill is not a bill about what anyone is allowed to think. It is a bill to stiffen the penalties that can be legally imposed when a crime is determined to have been committed, motivated by hatred for a person based on their having certain characteristics such as their race, their sexuality, their country of origin, their gender identity, or their religion, amongst others. When a hate crimes bill is passed in Indiana, Hoosiers will still be free to think whatever they like, just not so free to commit crimes based on thoughts coming from a place of hatred without the potential consequence of firm and decisive punishment. Jews are commanded in the Torah, in the Bible, to "Sedek, sedek, tirodok." Justice, justice shall you pursue. The lawful possibility of strengthening penalties for people who commit crimes based on hatred of people because of certain unchangeable characteristics is what the hate crimes bill is all about. It is about justice, and that's why we're pursuing it. The Board of Trustees of Temple Beth El recently passed the following resolution. Whereas recent events in the state of Indiana and other states in this country have heightened this congregation's awareness of the continuing threat of acts predicated by hate and antisemitism, and whereas by definition hate crimes cause damage more extensive than the suffering of a specific victim because they serve to terrorize entire groups of people, and therefore the terror associated with hatefully motivated actions and/or crimes targeting groups based on characteristics that include but are not limited to religion, national origin, ethnicity, color, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or similar factors, is such that these crimes should be addressed specifically in Indiana's criminal code. And whereas Indiana is, as we all know, we could all say this together, one of only five states without a hate or bias crimes law, and whereas the Board of Trustees of Temple Beth El desires to publicly declare its condemnation of any discrimination against any group, as noted above, particularly of a violent or destructive nature, now therefore be it resolved that Temple Beth El and its rabbi and subgroups may speak in Temple Beth El's name to support hate crimes legislation at the local and state levels and to join with other allies in the community who are also working to urge the Indiana General Assembly or local councils to pass hate crimes legislation. This includes allowing Temple's name to be displayed as a member of alliances such as Indiana Forward or Indiana Alliance Against Hate in their campaign materials. This resolution was unanimously passed by Temple Beth El's Board of Trustees, and I respectfully urge this body, the South Bend Common Council, to pass the resolution that is currently before it on this issue that is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Next, anyone else?
Samantha Musley, 51244 Outer Drive. Good evening. Thank you, council members, for holding this meeting, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. My name is Samantha Musley. I was born and raised in South Bend, Indiana. I'm an active member of the Islamic Society of Machina and AmeriCorps member at the University of Notre Dame. As an AmeriCorps member, I have dedicated this year of my life to service to our community. I run an English as a new language preschool at the Robinson Center. I am a daughter, wife, mother, and an educator. Unfortunately, despite my contributions, I have experienced hate in my community because of my religion. I have a place in this country. I, my husband, my four daughters, my students, we all have a right to feel safe and included in our community. The hate that I've experienced should never be tolerated. My children should not live in fear of who they are because of the actions of others. We need this bill to protect the America that I see every day, the hard-working families from all over the world who have come to this country because it is the land of the free for all, where hate and intolerance should not be accepted. I teach a beautiful, diverse group of children, and we need this bill so that no one is afraid of being judged for who they are, what they look like, or what they believe. This bill is important not just for people like me, but for every child and every adult that has ever felt different. This bill will allow me to renew my belief in America and continue teaching to my children and my students about the America of freedom, acceptance, and diversity. Let's make South Bend a beacon of hope for our families and a model for the rest of the state and country to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm John Pinter, 1224 Sunnyme. Thank you, members of the Common Council, for the opportunity to briefly speak and add the support of the United Religious Community to your resolution in favor of the state's Bias Crimes Act. The URC, as an interfaith organization, not a religion, is admittedly cautious about engaging in legislative politics. There are a lot of proposals that come before us to be for something or against it that might create such potential disagreement that we would no longer be united. That said, all the major faith traditions, those with millions of members and those with many counterparts with fewer adherents, find commonality in issues like being united against poverty, united against violence, and in agreement about being welcoming to the stranger. From that commonality, the URC Board decided to actively support bias or hate crimes legislation. Opposition comes mostly from one of two things. One is the debunked notion that hate crime legislation regulates thought or speech. I won't spend time on that, it's readily disproven, but religious leaders would be the first ones in here if they thought that legislation was going to take away any constitutionally protected beliefs. They depend on that, as do their adherents. The other kind of opposition flows from fear, I think, the fear that specifically naming a group or groups might imply something more. If we have specific types of people identified, is having a protection might mean that, might that mean that only they have that protection or a special right? Not all people are ready to accept all kinds of other folks, but that's not the purpose of this law. In fact, any of our backgrounds can cause us to be targets of hate crimes for the fact that we are or are not part of a group, a religious background or a nonbeliever, political group or ethnic or racial group, many of the combinations that we choose or have no choice that are part of our own identities. Everyone in this room has the opportunity to be a victim of a hate crime, but history shows that particular groups are far more likely to be affected. And since so many of those folks who are affected now are immigrants, ethnic and religious minorities that URC works with, that causes our solidarity with members of the LGBTQ and business communities and so many others in supporting your council's opportunity to support this state legislation. Firebombing a person's home is unquestionably a crime. Firebombing a minister's home because you want to send a message to their movement, as happened to Dr. King, is a hate crime. If we change the kind of an underlying crime, instead of defacing a temple or shooting at a refugee's house, beating up a gay pride marcher, we still have criminality caused by an illegal expression of hatred, and the greater community of good rises up in support of those directly affected. But as important is to learn about the underlying prejudice that caused that. That community needs to be supported by a biased law to help it demonstrate that hate has no home in our state. It's the right thing to do, the smart thing to do, and it's way over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on down. Anybody else wants to speak? Just please line up.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself. My name is Margery Taylor. I live in 714 East Corry, and I don't want to speak to, preach to the choir. I knew Jody Henderson. He was actually beat to death in my neighborhood, and I know his parents, but I just want to thank you for considering and passing this legislation. Indiana should be ashamed of itself, it really should, for not having a hate law. That's it. I couldn't help myself. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
Zachary Gillis, member of the Board of Directors at the LGBTQ Center, 1522 East Mishawaka Avenue. I just want to extend my sincere thanks to the council for holding this meeting and giving us the opportunity to share a little bit on how we want to remedy this vital societal issue. As representatives from the LGBTQ Center, we want to extend our gratitude to the South Bend Common Council for this resolution calling for the enactment of legislation addressing hate crimes in the state of Indiana. At the LGBTQ Center, we stand by our promise that all are welcome to attend our events, visit our center, enjoy our programming, and take part in pride. Part of the reason we have been able to thrive is because South Bend and St. Joseph County have passed and enforced comprehensive human rights protections for our community. The South Bend Human Rights Commission extends protections against discrimination in employment, fair housing, public accommodations, and education to the LGBTQ community by including sexual orientation or gender identity as protected classes. The city understands the need to protect our rights, and that is why we are proud to call South Bend our home. But not everywhere in Indiana is affirming to the LGBTQ community as South Bend, and the protections of the Human Rights Commissions do not protect us from violence. In the United States, we have a long history of violence against the LGBTQ community. From the riots at Stonewall to the tragic events at Pulse nightclub, our spaces can become places where the escalation of hate can end our lives. For the third year in a row, the number of reported hate crimes has risen in the United States. The FBI knows that victims of hate crimes are largely targeted for race, religion, and sexual orientation. It is vital that the Indiana General Assembly understands that the LGBTQ community must be included in any laws designed to protect Hoosiers from hate.
Thank you.
And my name is Lance Monks. I am the Development Director of the Center, also at 1522 East Mishawaka Avenue. Because hate crime reporting is not mandatory, the numbers of victims are undercounted. The reality of hate crimes in our community is felt in the loss of the victims we mourn. In the corner of our building is a sign that reads "Justice for Jody," a reminder of the loss of Jody Henderson, who was murdered in South Bend in January 2016. Jody was a 26-year-old black gay veteran remembered for generous heart and beloved his family. Jody's family attended every day of his trial, a trial where the bias motivation of the crime was not investigated or accounted. When someone from our community is taken too soon because of hate, we deserve justice. Our community is dying because of hate. At the beginning of 2018, the Human Rights Campaign attempted to call attention to the fatal transgender hate crimes to honor the lives of those we lost. They found that by November of last year, 22 transgender people had been killed in the United States simply for living their authentic lives. Eighty-two percent of them were women of color, 64% were under the age of 35. Fatal crimes against the LGBTQ people continue to rise, and we have no hope of federal protections. The crisis of violence against LGBTQ people demands action. Crimes motivated by hatred and bigotry have no place in our city, our state, or our country. We applaud the South Bend Common Council in taking this step and urging the Indiana General Assembly to pass inclusive hate crime legislation this session.
Thank you.
So I'm Will Centeas Coats. I live at 2740 Miami Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of La Casa de Amistad tonight. I was born in Santa Cruz, Bolivia. I'm an immigrant to this country, and I work with immigrants on a daily basis. Most of us do, but I work for immigrants on a daily basis in this community, and I have to be subject to the type of hate speech that is targeted at our community all the time. I have to read it on Facebook. I have to see it. We get nasty voicemails. This is one of the methods to help us fight against those kind of things, to speak up for the kind of country we want to be, the kind of city we want to be. I'm speaking last to kind of back clean up, so everybody covered all my several of my points. I've got two things I want to say. That laws can do many things. Laws restrict actions. They change activities. Laws can also protect people, but in this case, I think laws talk about the place you live. Laws talk about the character of the people that live there. Laws talk about the things that are important to those people that live in that place where you are. This says that we, as Hoosiers, as South Benders, won't tolerate hate, won't tolerate activities that were driven by hate, that are motivated by hate, and it's important that we, as a community, say that. And I'm not just speaking to the council because I think we've got support here, but for everybody else as well in terms of the work that's going to have to happen from here forward to get legislation like this to pass in the state. And one of the things that for me drives me crazy about Indiana and our exclusive lists that we're on, and I get tired of trying to use that negative peer pressure of we're only five, right, and five states, whether we were the first or the last to do this, we should do it because it's the right thing, right? As Hoosiers, we've got to stop saying, everybody else led, now let's do it. I don't care what every other state has done. I don't care what every other community has done. I don't care what other councils or mayors or congresspeople have done. What matters is that the city of South Bend is going to say, we're about the right thing, and we're going to make the rest of our state, and we're going to push to make this happen statewide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Jason Bedicki, 3822 West Ford Street. It's really easy to stand up here and support something like this because in reality, while no one should have to fear being a victim of a crime just because they are, unfortunately in the society we live in, that all too often happens. And for those who say, well, why should motivation matter? For quite many of the crimes, motivation matters. That's why we have homicide, murder, manslaughter, reckless homicide, things of that nature. And Indiana is no stranger to codifying enhancements for certain activities. If you commit a crime within 1,000 feet of a school zone, that can be a crime. If you are a multiple-time felon, that can be an enhancement to a crime. If you've committed a crime while a member of a gang, that can be an enhancement to a crime. So this is not asking Indiana to do anything new. This is not asking Indiana to create something that's never existed. This is asking Indiana and the legislators downstate to do the right thing and protect those who deserve it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, I will ask, is there anyone wishing to speak against this special resolution? Seeing none, I would just like to say thank you to our sponsors, Mr. Vorty, Ms. Broden, on this. We'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt by a commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All of us passes.
Yeah, just for the record, anyone who spoke tonight, if you want to convey your written documents, pile them up. I'll be ready to transmit those as well, so feel free to do that before you meet this evening. And then if you have an electronic copy, I'm sure Graham Sparks in her office would quickly enjoy your electronic copy if you didn't have it. So feel free, but thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. As we move on, if you're going to leave and not watch Democracy in Action, please leave quietly. Thank you all for coming. Probably one of the most important special resolutions we've done. I do, I received a note from the clerk's office. If you're here for Resolution 1873 regarding 1718 Marine Street, that has been withdrawn by the petitioner. So 1873 resolution has been withdrawn. With that, at this time, I do not believe we have any reports from city offices. I believe Susanna Pittsburgh is in the audience for the mayor's office. Thank you for being here. Thank the mayor for him showing up as well. With that, I entertain a motion to rise and join the committee of the whole.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Vorty?
Wow.
You get to steer.
Okay, before I start, there's one quick thing I'd like to do, and that's to thank Gavin Furlik in particular for his willingness to share leadership in the last year of our term, and I'm sure Karen feels the same way, and would like to thank Oliver for the same reason.
I love this opportunity that they have given.
And you still get to be chairman of the final.
Here's the little speech that Chairman of the Committee of the Whole reads before this particular part of the agenda. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity after the presentation to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes each. With that, will the city clerk please read Bill Number 5918?
5918. Public area line ordinance, amended zoning ordinance, for property located at 1405 and 1505 East Howard Street, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Our committee report for me would be that the zoning authorization, the committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with a favorable report.
Who is making the presentation?
Yeah, hi. Jordan Wyatt, here with the area planning and offices on 11th floor of this building. What I'm passing out to you right now is the amended written commitments from this afternoon's committee meeting regarding this resolution. The petitioner is requesting to reason the area outlined in red on your screen from SF2 Single Family and Two Family District to MF1 Urban Corridor, Multi Family District. To the north and west is Howard Parks of SF2 Single Family and Two Family Districts. To the east are single-family homes of SF1 Single Family and Two Family Districts. To the south are single-family homes of SF2 Single Family and Two Family Districts. Here's a view of the property as it currently is. The site plan shows the development of seven single-family homes abutting Howard Street and 30 multi-family units on the interior of lots. Parking would be located in garages for the units with some on-street parking. A pedestrian path runs along the north side of the property. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, subject to the following written commitments. The buildings surrounding Howard Street will have a maximum height of 35 feet and two and a half stories. North-south sidewalk will be provided on the west side with public access to Frederickson Park on the northwest corner of the project site. Type A perimeter landscaping will be provided on the east side of the property abutting the drive and parking area. Type A perimeter landscaping will be provided along Howard Street. The curb cut on the west side of the project will line up Jacob Street. Sidewalk will be provided the length of the project frontage on Howard Street. The animals living in the woods will be trapped and relocated humanely for two weeks prior to the removal of any trees. The cost will be covered by Century Builders. I'd be happy to answer any questions and petitioners today as well.
Thank you for that report. Just for clarification, it's Frederickson Park that's north, not Howard.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's quite our. Now, who is making a presentation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Brian McMorro with Abin Marsh Consultants, 750 Lincoln Way East here in South Bend, on behalf of the property owners, Howard Street Land Trust and Five Corners LLC, and also the home builder and developer Century Builders. The plan that is shown on the screen came about after Century Builders had a notion to develop a property for a higher density than a single-family zone. They reached out to the neighbors one-on-one, met with neighborhood groups, the university and others, and in the end, the plan that we're proposing includes a plan to have single-family homes along Howard Street and then multifamily homes with the fronts of those homes facing Frederickson Park. The idea is to engage with park, and our plan will also include a minor modification whereby the sidewalk, which is shown presently to run through the middle of the project, will be relocated to form essentially an extension of North Jacob Street and welcome residents of that neighborhood to use the park and the passive recreation opportunities that presented themselves. We were pleased that we had the support of Area Plan Commission. We met with the Planning and Annexation Committee this afternoon. The written commitments that were set forth are acceptable to our client. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before we move to the public portion, this is the time that we have council questions.
Ms. McMorro?
Yes.
Could you describe the neighborhood interaction that you did in terms of preparing for this project and throughout your presentations?
Certainly.
You get ready to come here?
Yes, Century Builders, they're a local home builder. They're developing other communities in South Bend. They reached out to individual property owners this past fall, and the plan that was shared with them one-on-one, and also a neighborhood meeting was called in the Boy Scouts building over on 23 this fall as well. So there was a significant effort made to get the input of the neighbors before the plan was effective.
So this comes as no surprise to the neighbors at all?
It should not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Presentation? Then we'll move to the public portion.
I don't have a question, but it deals with the commitments.
Okay.
And again, I think for the record, and citizens will have copies of those commitments, the seven commitments were made that really enhanced this particular project. And so I really want to thank you, the presenter and also the developer for working. As council member Oliver Davis has said, we always ask the question, have you spoken with the neighbors? And what level of conversation and/or engagement that has occurred? And so this is just a great example in terms when developers and neighbors and all come together, we end up with a better project. So thank you so much.
Thank you for pointing that out, Karen. Now we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone opposed? We'll move back to the council portion.
Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I really cut back into this, and I do want to thank Councilperson Broden for your commitment to sidewalks and the questions that you ask, and the developer on that part. You know, we deal a lot with sidewalk issues within the city. Anywhere we're making this better and walkable is definitely a plus, so thank you for what you guys do. Thank you for being due diligence of it.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Yeah, just to thank you, the developers. You really went about this in just an outstanding manner. Really makes our job easier as a district member, and I hope fellow council members will vote in favor of this. But great planning, great working with our planning team within our city's administration, and as other members have said, just commend you for your outreach and then your willingness, you know, to list these commitments and to stand by these commitments. And I think what's reflected, I mean, there's seven statements, but I was there and Councilmember Vorty was there at the open house meeting, and these really show that you've taken the input of the neighbors to heart, and I think what's going to happen here, you know, this is going to be a win-win for everybody. You're going to have great properties to sell and to provide amazing living spaces, you know, in kind of an area who knew, quite frankly, right, in the fourth district. This is tucked back in there. I'd be surprised if there's really any other locations adjacent to parks in the city of South Bend that are undeveloped. So, yeah, the word was pretty cool I just heard, so I'm going to echo "pretty cool" as the official statement. But then also the outward-facing, you know, of the single-family homes. But then also, the outward facing, you know, of the single-family homes, you know, to the street of Howard Street itself, I mean, it's complimentary. So I think you've really hit a sweet spot in your planning and we are grateful for that in terms of the higher density, but also something, you know, that's not going to be onerous on the neighborhood, but will work for both the residents and the neighbors as well. So great planning, great relationship, great outreach. Thank you for being, frankly, in my opinion, a model of how this can and should be done. Appreciate it.
Make a motion to send the full council favorably.
Second motion made and seconded to send to the council favorably, hold in favor, signature five by saying aye. Okay, will the court please read sixty-one eighteen? Oh, any ayes? No.
Fifty-nine eighteen. Public hearing on ordinance of the common house of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter seventeen of the South Bend municipal code to add a new article fourteen establishing interim water, stormwater utility rates and amending chapter two article fourteen to create a new fund for these revenues to be known as Storm Sewer Fund, number sixteen seven.
The utilities committee met this afternoon and bring this to the full council with no recommendations.
Okay, moving on, who's making the presentation here?
Good evening, thank you, council. Eric Corvath, Public Works Director, thirteenth floor of this building. Appreciate your consideration of this ordinance in front of you. As you know, this ordinance does two things, establishes Fund six-six-seven, which is a storm sewer fund, but also establishes a storm sewer user fee that would be associated with that and would go into that fund. As you know, we've had a number of conversations on this and it goes back to appropriations in our budget for the two thousand nineteen budget back in August. And we don't have a dedicated storm sewer infrastructure fund in the city of South Bend. However, having said that, there's significant needs. And those needs are only getting larger with the increasing intensity that we have of storms that we've seen in the last number of years. And so what this ordinance does is it establishes a stormwater fund, which would be a dedicated and sustainable source of funding for future generations to use to address stormwater issues throughout the city. In the past, it's not that we didn't fund drainage at all, it's just that we were constantly looking for a place to fund it. A good example is last year's budget, the two thousand eighteen budget. We had five hundred thousand dollars in drainage projects that was in local road and street funding. Again, if there was a lack of need for that funding, that would be okay. But given the significant need that we have of those funds as well for road funding, it makes it really difficult when you're trying to use drainage funds for other purposes and you're borrowing and using these other funds. And so I feel it's important that we have a dedicated fund so that we don't take away from some of the needs of these other funds and their intended purpose. In October, the council approved the stormwater budget in Fund six-sixty-seven. This essentially is the accompanying enabling ordinance that will go along with it. It sets a rate of two dollars per resident per month as the user fee and also five dollars per commercial industrial property per month as well. And that is starting in June of this year. This will be an interim rate until the city has the opportunity to look at impervious impervious areas and looks at possible modification of those rates based on those calculations. That would be something that we would obviously come back to the council with at that time with an understanding of how those funds were calculated and what those new user rates are. But for now, the ordinance is establishing the two dollars per resident per month and five dollars per commercial industrial per month. We've had, the council administration have had continued dialogue about how we can help our struggling residents as well. And I don't want to leave that untouched in this conversation. I think it's important that we have a dedicated funding source for stormwater infrastructure, but it's also critical for us to continue to find ways to help meet the needs of struggling residents. And I think, you know, that's a significant and ongoing issue that we're going to need to address as an administration and council. I know that we've already started addressing that in some ways. We worked together, the council and administration, on establishing the South Bend Green Core program in this year's budget, which is essentially an AmeriCore program where we've got people going into homes and they will do assessments in the homes to try to find ways to reduce their electric costs, their heating costs, their sewer and water costs. So they'll do things like low-flow aerators or low-flosh toilets or fixing leaks or winterization, doing things like programmable thermostats, all those things that can help reduce their costs on their electric, their heat, their sewer and their water. In addition to that, we are committed to working together on lifeline rates and trying to find a way that we set a threshold and any resident making below that threshold would have a rate that would be less than the rest of their population, so on our sewer user fees. This, as you know, was not, we were not able to do this in the past. We only had the ability to do cost-of-service basis rates, but in this past state legislature, they passed the ability to do differential rates, allowing for lifeline rates, and that's something that we're committed to working with the council on. We've indicated that we will have a proposal by June for the council to look at so that we can start the dialogue on that as well. So I appreciate your consideration of this bill and I'm happy to answer your questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the council question portion. Councilmember White?
Yes, would you also share that any increments could not occur without council having looked at these particular proposals, if and when they may come, but also in terms of us taking action? So that the administration could not increase any rates without not only coming to the council, but they also have to submit that to the state for approval?
Yeah, that's absolutely.
You go through that process and so that as we look at for, you know, if this is approved for the two thousand nineteen year, residents will be looking at twelve dollars because it will not go into effect until June two thousand nineteen. And then two thousand twenty, it will be twenty-four dollars. And then after that time, that administration would have to come back to the council. But in the meantime, there's certain expectations in terms of the work that must occur as we move forward with this particular bill.
Yeah, just to reiterate, that's absolutely correct, that any change in those user fees would have to go before the council. It's under the council's jurisdiction to set those rates. And so even if you want to make the two dollar per month charge two dollars and one cents, I don't have the authority to do that without coming back to council and getting council approval.
Okay, is it the next step that we would also have to need approval at the state level as well?
Yes, for the lifeline rates, we would. On the stormwater fees themselves, we would not.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Regina?
Oh, go ahead, though. Just definitionally, before we go any further, the lifeline rates, what that's entail? Is service understanding that?
Yeah, so we don't have these thresholds fully defined, but you'd set a threshold under which people would have a differential rate. So to give an example, if you were a family of a certain size and you're a hundred fifty percent below the poverty line in your income, we would have a process through which you'd go through an income verification and then you'd be eligible for a number of different programs, one of which would be a lower sewer rate. And so we're working on those numbers and doing some sensitivity analysis to see what that deduction will be, but essentially that's what we're talking about, is anyone below that level would get a deduction on their sewer bill.
Thank you. And that's part of what you're going to clarify and bring to us June first or by that time, correct?
Yeah, we will have that too by June, yes.
Okay, terrific. Can you clarify what kinds of things this actually, you know, because talking to my constituents, I mean, just straight up, it's like, no, we can't afford anything else. You know, you're breaking our backs. Talk to me about why this is important, like what is this money actually going to go to? If I'm going to give you two extra dollars a month, where does that go?
Yeah, so...
How does that help me?
We've indicated to the council that this is going to be used for capital and so it'll meet stormwater infrastructure needs. So an example in this year's budget, it's everything from down-spot disconnect, which is keeping that clean water out of the system from overburdening, burning, a largely combined system, which causes sewer backups in people's basements. It's things like separating sewers on western avenues, so you have a separate sanitary and storm sewer instead of a combined line, which again alleviates the basic backup issue. It does things like solves drainage issues in areas like Olivia Circle or Lindenwood or Outlook Court where we've got significant drainage issues where when it rains, we're flooding people's homes. And so those are some examples, but it's for stormwater infrastructure funding. It could be to build a new retention basin. It could be to build some green infrastructure so that instead of putting into storm infrastructure, we can try to have rainwater taking care of the source. But it will, it'll be, the intended purpose is to help fund stormwater infrastructure since we don't have a funding source for that.
So was it twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we had that big issue with flooding? I know it's many times, but most specifically around the corner from our house, on Frederickson. We had, and in that area of district two, we had catastrophic flooding, water backing up, flooding into basements. Some homes had to be demolished because of that. People were displaced. And the cost of moving, the cost of losing goods, clothes, things like that. So it sounds like what you're talking about is this is prevention. This is by investing what would be right now twenty-four dollars a year for residential properties. It would be actually, could it be, is the question, an investment in prevention of this kind of catastrophic flooding down the road? So I don't lose my home, I don't lose my, all the things that are within my home, even if I'm renting, a small investment on the front end to provide prevention. Because I remember when that happened, then we were coming back and saying, how can we help people with the hundreds and thousands of dollars that they were going to need in order to be made whole again? So is that what we're getting at?
Absolutely. It's exactly for that, to help prevent having flooding problems and backup problems in people's homes. And so it's to handle the stormwater appropriately. And although, you know, this will generate just over a million dollars a year, which is not enough, as you well know, for the whole city, it gets it moving forward in the right direction in my eyes and it gets us some ability to start in moving on some of the highest priority areas where we know we've got significant issues every time it rains.
And finally, with this, we've also been talking about the lifeline rates or the income-based rates. Can you say something about the advocacy you'd be looking for from us as a council and/or the community in making change downstate so that we can implement that? And while we're imposing, at this point, imposing some additional tax, if you will, or additional request for funds, we're also looking at very seriously ways to lift the burden of utility.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for that. You know, as we've discussed, this is Mute, Indiana, so they haven't allowed differential rates in the past, other states have. But part of the legislature indicates that the IURC will need to look at how you set those differential rates and they'll need to ultimately approve them. Because nobody's gone through that process, we don't know what that process looks like yet. And so we'll have conversations with them ahead of time, but it will likely be very helpful for them to know that our community is supportive of lifeline rates and that our council is supportive of lifeline rates and that it's something that we're going to embrace as a community. And so I think that's a very important part of it, especially for the IURC, as they're looking at this as a new endeavor for them, uncharted area.
So an action step, and I think maybe Ms. McBride, Councilwoman McBride, she spoke about the need for more conversation. I don't know if you're going to mention that, I'll let you do that if you're going to. So I'm done, I'll let her talk about that.
Are you up, Chair?
Yes. Well, I want to say thank you for immediately taking the time to defer the date until June instead of January one and talking to a lot of the constituents without being educated. There are a lot of concerns, of course, having the burden financially put on the residents. Talking with some of them, asking about a plan and being a part of the discussion and finding out who and how it impacts everyone. It did help a bit by talking about how it just doesn't affect one area, that it's an impact of, I think Councilwoman Broden talked about taxpayers as a whole, when you have EMS has to come out or the river rescue have to come out and rescue folks or the public safety officers coming out, that's all taxpayer dollars, you know, city or county-wide. So it just doesn't affect that if my home is not impacted by flooding, me coming out with money. So I appreciate having further conversations, but still definitely want to make sure that we talk about the commitments of having ongoing meetings and having some of the community members and residents at the table talking about what that looks like or how they're impacted financially to have further discussion.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. Sorry I missed the committee earlier today, but I appreciate, Eric, you responded to the questions. Sharon McBride, I submitted joint questions. I'm glad to see you answered that. I too am willing to hold your feet to the fire on further improvements in meetings down the road. I'm going to pick on Councilperson Broden again. She said probably two meetings ago, you know, this isn't only in the flood areas, this is other areas that don't include the flood, that we have some major issues. One concern that I have is down in Keller Park, and this is quite a bit away from the river, and we're in correspondence, you and Kara Boiles on this, is where we put in some nice new curbs and sidewalks, which created a whole other problem where the street is not graded properly, which literally holds water now. And then in the wintertime, you not only hold water, but you hold a ice pond, skate rig. So it's part of the grading of the system. And I live on a pretty high hill, but I see the effects that we're having on Portage Avenue, because I get out there with my rake every now and then when we have a big flood, big storm, we rake out the storm sewers along Portage so people aren't driving in six inches of water. So it is desperately needed, we need to look at our infrastructure. It's part of the reason we started curbs and sidewalks program years ago, because we had issues with this. And I understand where the funding needs to go, but I also agree, we asked a few meetings ago of looking at alternative sources down the road. So I'm willing to be a part of those meetings down the road.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Thank you. Given the fact that the implementation date is not starting until June the first and today's January the fourteenth, and there's been a request for continued dialogue to look at this whole proposal and everything that's recognized, and we have already had some, I still think that there's time and the necessary need for us to have to vote on this tonight is not necessary. What I would like to see is where are we with the whole CSO plan? Where are we now? Where are we now? That has not been, since Dr., my colleague Dr. Verner and Dr. Furlik left, there's been a gap, a wide gap, and given us a clear update to see how much are we, I mean, years ago, when we first had that, and I chaired that committee, we had that huge amount of bill that we all were going to pay. And then it's been adjusted to different issues. You've had a change in presidencies, and where one administration required with the EPA versus how another administration is required is different. Well, then how does that difference turn and translate into dollars for the city of South Bend regarding that? Is it a savings? Is it more? Is it less? I heard it was less. How much less? And if it's less than what we had already agreed to, why can this be in as one of that funding and work with that? Is that a possibility? The idea of, you said that you have used TIP funds for part of this. How much TIP funds have been used for this? Can more TIP funds be used for it? How much can, how much cannot? People need to know that, because even though this is going to be added to the water rates, and it's not necessarily a water bill, it's still on the water bill, because it's added to that, and given the fact that there have been hikes in the past years with that, it's like a drip, 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 drip coming down the faucet that can, people are trying to get. And so, and then the idea that you won't be able to transfer any other monies out of, this is helping us not to transfer funds out of other funds. Every department, since these last 12 years of being here, has transferred monies three times a year, or two times a year when we had it, and three times a year, or numerous amount of times, they have transferred throughout the year. And so I'm trying to figure out how this kind of thing is going to prevent more transfers from not being there, because I see this. And then I also say that in our discussion that we had in our last meeting, when there was a person that came from the Leeper Park area, that said that, you know, this is going to help in case we have the big storm, a combination with the snow and water like we had last year, that this is going to help our situation. I mean, it was testified that it wouldn't necessarily help our situation in that same kind of thing. And so, because we're dealing with other issues of infrastructure. So I think that it gave a false sense that we're raising this to help with this, but it's not going to necessarily help in case we have those floods that, and Councilwoman Broden, now, that's what I talked about, in their area, where she had all the basements. It's not necessarily going to stop that, and if it does, then what does people's homeowners insurance, how does that face? Does the city become the homeowner's insurance? How do we deal with those kind of things, rental insurance? Those are some key issues that we have to look at. And what's, so, to me, if the enactment was planning for February, okay, possible, we can do today. We have another meeting in January, and two, four, six, five more meetings, and it was moved to the first. Yes, we say, well, we give you time for your staff to have planning and everything else. They still can plan. Our delay in a vote, and having more understanding of all the questions I just raised, will not be solved tonight, and so I don't, I'm not asking you to comment on every single one of them, because that's not going, to look at that, a summary of all that, that's not going to change my vote on this. So I think that we need to just have the time and to delay this vote to move forward, because there's no way that I can support this tonight. So that is just a comment, you don't have to have a question. I'm moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Broden, follow-up?
Just, I guess, a couple points. To me, this is really getting at sort of those non-big event flooding, right? I'd like to hearken our attention as a council to the budget process, where we were provided a map that basically identified nearly every single street in the city of South Bend having some issue, okay? Not the big event issues, but some issues, which then has impact on residential. And I may be exaggerating, but even if we blew that map up, and, you know, maybe there'd be a couple blocks, but as part of the presentation within the budget, these, and then the background, the data that supported that map came from 311 calls, came from repeated calls to those locations. So these are outstanding, longstanding problems on most every street of the city of South Bend, from, you know, from the data. And historically, we've been raiding funds to get anything done. So we've got a list of problems, it's longer than what we've had available funding to do, we've raided other needed project dollars to get things done. So from my perspective, you know, this is long overdue, right? And again, I'm not speaking from one of the districts and one of the areas hardest hit in 2016, and then boom, right again in 2017. So that's, I hope, one point, just to communicate. Two, I think we've been very responsive, and I think the dialogue that each council member has brought to this, the concerns, you know, we've had plenty of time to massage this and, you know, tweak it, we've delayed the time, and let's be really frank, too, I mean, the level that we're asking, you know, compared to other municipalities within the state of Indiana, we're coming at a low-ball mark here anyway. So, you know, let's put that context around this. Those were earlier conversations, I think we have to be, or at least I would like to bring that to council members' attention, you know, before you look to vote on this. The administration, Mr. Horvath, your department, you, your department, has been, you know, really responsive, as I said, about the actual rates in the first place. Second, that you're going to look at an extended rollout time, it's not January 1. We're being asked as a council to kick this off, you know, and give some leeway to residents. That is going to affect, albeit, the funding that's available in the first year to actually get to this, to-do priority list, you know, but that's what it is. I mean, that's the give and take, I think, that's responsible, you know, for us as legislators, and you as, you know, in charge of implementing these types of programs. I think your commitment that I have heard tonight with regard to the ongoing conversations, and what else we can bring to the table in terms of the differential rates, you know, and that conversation, your commitment to come back to that and to nail it in June, I think is great. I also appreciate that this is interim, right? But it's frozen at an interim level. We're not going to add to this, we're not going to tweak it up. We've specifically not asked to, you know, have it tiered five months, or six months from now, a year from now, or, you know, or when it hits its two-year date. We haven't tied an automatic inflator or increaser, you know, increaser on this. So, and that goes to the work of this council being, and members being very sensitive to the burden on residents. My last point is, despite all of this, you know, I'm going to leave the lifeline rates, you know, up and kind of looking at that, and I thank you for being responsive to our, to some concerns on that. But that, you know, that's up to you, that's on you, and I'm glad you're going to take that on. I appreciate that, and I'm glad we're taking advantage. Thank God the legislation saw the wisdom, the legislators downstate saw the wisdom of, you know, putting some of these things in place for the state of Indiana. But for me and my, me and my focus, I guess, in 2019, and I guess I'd encourage, you know, the rest of the council, let's focus on job creation, job retention, and an inclusive economy. Then these kind of conversations, right? You know, we can afford to make our houses safe, habitable, and then, you know, we have resources as a community to dedicate to these public spaces that we call our streets. And, more importantly, the infrastructure that's underneath that, and out of everybody's sight, out of everybody's mind. So I think you've been very responsive, I think you've been very reasonable, and you've been very patient, and I think we've, you know, had enough discussion to come to, in my opinion, something that is needed and very reasonable. So thank you very much.
Or final comment?
Number one, I don't think that we have had enough discussion to deal with the greatest, one of the greatest challenges that the city's going to have to face is the CSO issues. We haven't talked about them. If, majority of the people of South Bend can't even clarify how that's going to affect their life, but it will. And from those meetings that we had just a couple years ago, it was clear that that was going to affect people's lives, and all of a sudden went off the map, and people didn't want to talk about it. Well, just because it's not off the map, I mean, it's off the map doesn't mean it's off the reality of life, and we have to talk about that and put it in context of our bills. We can't just keep piecemealing this, and the idea that we won't raise anything again over the next years. Well, we may not raise this particular thing, but we can cause the next councils to sit there and make it another type of water, and call it something else and raise that, and that's a dollar here, and then they can raise something else, and that's 50 cents there, and then they can raise something else, a new name, and that's a $3 there. That's, so, no. We have to put something in perspective. And to say that we have to look at what the other cities and states, and the cities and states have done, and when it comes down to this water, well, they have none of it. Well, the other cities and states have not had to deal with the kind of CSO issues that we're having to deal with at to the greatest level. Indianapolis has, and they've done some things, and they've been able to deal with that with the port. But many of our other sister cities haven't had to face the CSO issues that we have to face. Not all of our sister cities have a water, say, a river that goes through there, so they don't have to deal with a lot of those kind of issues. We do, and we have an older city, we have to look at that. So again, and then we have to look at the economy of our city, and so those kind of things. We just cannot just sit up there and say all of that. So I am highly concerned that we are saying that we are, without having the answers, and just to praise us for not having done it in January, we didn't do it in January, because there were not a lot of answers at the question for us to do it in January. And so therefore, let's be real with that.
Looks like we have one more short comment before we move to the public portion.
I think Councilman Davis' point is well-taken. As I sit here, and I'm thinking I'm going to do one thing, thinking I'm doing another, you know, when Councilwoman Broden mentioned you had enough discussion, it just made me think, we've had live discussions, but to your point, and your point, I'm not sure how much we've had in public discussion, and I think that one of the things I've been thinking of as good legislation comes, when we really understand the impact, and we can only do that when we really engage at a different level. And so I look forward to hearing from the public tonight, but I'm feeling like I might need some more discussion. And again, if this, we're not actually looking at, you know, charging the rates until June, we do have time. So I'd like to move to public discussion whenever, and hear more about what people have to say.
Okay, we'll move to the public portion of the discussion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in support of the sewer rate?
Pam Clayes, 1106 Bellevue, the great 3rd District. I came to this meeting not for this issue, but I have talked with my councilperson about this issue, and the concern I raised to her was people that don't have money. So I'm glad to see the lifeline rates, or the, whatever you call them, I think that's a good step, I think this is a good step, I think we need to have money for the sewer projects. So I don't know, I'm not as well-versed as you are in this, but I think it's a good step in the good direction, and I'd like to encourage you to keep working on this.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in support of the sewer rate?
Robert Stanley, 910 Minor Street, and I am also, was attending not for this purpose, but having listened to the discussions, I am in support of it. Sewers and roads and other basic utilities like that tend to be underfunded and forgotten about, and yes, money must be managed wisely, and I have not gone through the past five, 10, 20 years to figure out all the increases in fees and taxes that have gone towards this. But in general, this seems like a very reasonable amount that will be watched closely by the council, and so with those cautions in mind, I am in support of this measure.
Thank you. Anyone else in support of the new sewer rate? And anyone wishing to speak against the sewer rate?
Sharon Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. Councilmembers Sharon and Jake, you haven't been around as long, so you haven't seen everything. In 2014, the administration came to the council and asked for a 9% sewer rate increase. The compromise was 5% for the next three years. So it started out at $2 the first year, totaling after the three years, in 2017, the increase was a total of $6.40 a month for residents. In 2015, administration came in and asked the council for a rate increase for trash. The compromise was it went up $1 a month starting January 1, 2016, $1 a month again on January 1, 2017, so a rate increase of 19%. In March of 2018, administration came in and asked for a water rate increase, which the council approved, and was just approved by the state of Indiana, to add an extra $4.74 a month to the water bills. When you add that up, it's over $12 a month for the average citizen, which doesn't sound like much, but your fixed-income people went many years without any rates raises, $144 a year. Every time we turn around, as you see, 14, 15, 17, administrations coming with their hands out, we need more money, we need more money. The citizens cannot afford it. We can't keep going to the citizens, and, you know, you're worried about capital improvements. Well, smart streets was a want, not a need. Maybe the money from there should have been used on sewers and water. You've got to start stopping them from draining the swamp, because we don't have any money left. The lifeline sounds great, but for somebody that's, you know, makes too much money, they're screwed, and a lot of people are going to be too proud to come in and ask for help.
Thank you. Next. In opposition?
Jason Benicki, 3822 West Ford Street. You know, for about the last seven years from this administration, we've heard time and time again, we have to raise the salaries of our top administration officials so we can attract the best and brightest. And we're not talking 2% or 3% or 4%, like they've given the average worker, or less. We're talking 20%, 30%, 40%. You know, initially, we issued a $5 million park bond, and I love parks, but then we increased it to $50 million. Sometimes it has to be about priorities, and infrastructure needs to be a priority. But when you have a, I think Notre Dame's most recent ALIS study that just came out showed a 43% working port rate. You know, until we know what those lifeline rates will be, and what those thresholds will be, it's hard to say, hey, let's go forward with this, and we'll work out all the details later. How about we have all the details first, and then approve or don't approve a measure? Because not only that, we're going to hear again, we don't have the money for this project, and we don't have the money for this. And again, like Oliver pointed out, we don't know what the CSO bill is still going to be. But I expect in the coming months, we're going to hear from this administration, hey, we've got $100 million to move the train station downtown. So again, what are our priorities? What are our needs versus what are our wants? We seem to have put a lot of money on our credit card for our wants, and not our needs, and now we're paying enough on interest that we don't have money to cover our basic needs. And so the answer has been, not let's go to our best and brightest and say, hey, you cut back a little bit, instead of asking our citizens to. No, they come out with their hand out again, and say, hey, let's just tax a little bit more money, when we're already the highest, second highest taxed county income-wise in the state, and tied for the highest taxed property tax county in the state. These are not things to be proud of. And again, until we have more answers, it's not fair to move forward with this today, to say, hey, these lifeline rates will be great. We don't know what they are yet. How can we go forward with it till we know what it is?
Thank you. Next.
Sue Castle, 4022 Kennedy Drive. I've watched this council for three and a half years, I've watched you give millions upon millions upon millions in TIP dollars to private developers. The original purpose of TIP, the very original purpose of creating TIP, was for infrastructure. Infrastructure means sewers, water, streets, public safety, things like Century Center. We've been dealing with CSO, combined sewer overflow, for 10 years now. $150 million has been spent on CSO. Shouldn't CSO have solved a lot of these problems? This proposes to bring in $1.2 million a year, but it will require a $600,000 new software program to handle the differentiation in the fees, since it's not applied to everyone evenly. 40%, as Jason mentioned... 40%, as Jason mentioned, are designated as struggling, 43%. We have a lot of seniors in South Bend who are on a fixed income. We have a lot of people who are minimum wage waiters. When you say $24, how long, how many more tables is a waiter or waitress going to have to bus to pay that? I mean, you need to think at street level. I think there's a priority-setting problem. Infrastructure and citizens first. I think you need to find the funding elsewhere other than putting one more thing on the citizens. Cut back on abatements. Hundreds of millions of dollars in abatements, hundreds of millions of dollars in TIP, and yet here we're supposed to add on to the citizens for their monthly expenses. To me, that's unconscionable. You know, you seem to be willing to vote for any request that comes by, and I just, I just think it's the wrong priority. I think, I sat through the 14 budget hearings, as you know. I just feel like the priorities aren't straight. So I think you need to go back to the drawing board, and I think you need to find a different way to fund this that doesn't involve, once again, pickpocketing the citizens' wallet.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Jennifer Robinson, and I'm a citizen of South Bend. I live in 46628 off Greenmont Drive. I'm here tonight about the water, and I also believe that our TIP funds should have been used for our water. And I also, we have been giving a lot of abatements that I don't agree with. Seems like we're giving millionaires tax abatements that they aren't needed. And I also called around to the other utilities. Even Chicago is less than what we pay for delivery. It doesn't matter if we use $5 worth of water or $10 worth of water, my water bill is still high because of the delivery fee. Chicago's is only 34, no, I'm sorry, 2949. I called Niles. Theirs was very low as well. Mishawaka's is low. Osceola's is lower than ours. The only one closest to us was Buchanan, and that was $30.44 for the people with the non-meter. So I hope you also, what Sue said, and look at your budget and try to figure out another way to pay for this instead of charging people in the county and the city for this. Our seniors can't afford it, and people on minimum wage can't afford it either. While the $24 sounds like a lot to you all, I know you probably make more than most of the people here, but it is a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the new sewer rate? That being the case, Eric, would you?
I would.
Care to rebut? Or not? Okay, go pass, and we'll go to the council for disposition.
Motion to defeat.
Is there a second? To reject the new sewer rate?
Can I ask a question about that? Does that, if we reject it tonight, does that mean it can never come back?
It'll come back. It can come back as many times as it want to come back. But tonight, it won't pass.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
If there weren't a second to this, can there be a motion to continue to set an actual date? I mean, is that a potential motion or not?
There can be motions until there's a second. Sure. Yeah.
All right.
Is there a second? If there is not, that motion fails. Are there any other motions?
Motion to continue?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to continue indefinitely, I presume?
No.
No?
She wants a date on it.
Can we put it in?
The motion.
I need a calendar.
You're in charge.
What's the, give us enough time to have maybe a couple of, you know, in case we get together and we still don't have it figured out, we could do one more before the June proposal that we'd actually implement.
You could just say the first or second meeting of some month.
Oh, so what would be like the first meeting of May? Do we still have time to come back if we weren't able to do that? What day is that?
First meeting in May, excuse me, the 13th.
The meeting's the 13th, and the end of the meeting, oh yeah, May's down.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
There's meeting the 13th and the 20th of the day.
Question the motion or clarify the motion, please?
I have nothing seconded. I want a motion seconded.
Okay, a motion was made to continue this until the May 13th meeting.
Right.
Is there a second? There is no second apparently for that, so we're.
Motion.
Motion for passage.
Second.
I'm sorry, motion to send it to full council favorably.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to send to full council favorably. Clerk Fowler, we probably need to call the roll on this.
Do you have a question? Chairman Breyer?
This is to, this is to recommend favorably. I'm sorry, Karen, to send to the full council.
Send to the full council. This is not applicable.
Send to the full council favorable, not to dissent. Right.
Who said that name? Councilmember Breyer?
May.
Councilmember Brode?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
May.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye. And what was the count?
There is six ayes, two nays. Moves to the full council favorably.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is Bill 6718.
6718, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending One Subpart Each of Section 13-126, 13-127, Chapter 13, Article 11 of the South Bend Municipal Code by Removing Certain Restrictions by Tattoo, Placidium, and Promises Licensed.
Community Investments sends this forward favorably. I'm sorry, with no recommendation. We didn't have a court.
Okay. No recommendation from Community Investment. Presentation.
My name's Michelle Adams. I'm with the Department of Community Investment on the 14th floor. And I'm here this evening on behalf of the city to request an amendment to the tattoo establishment and artist ordinance, Chapter 13, Article 11, Sections 13-126 and 13-127, which prohibits issuing a license to persons who have been convicted of a felony or who have been convicted of drug or alcohol violations. These restrictions can prevent a now law-abiding and disobeying applicant from operating a business in South Bend and making a gainful living. The city is trying to take into consideration that a felony and alcohol-related criminal conviction may have little to no relevance to the specialized practice of tattoo artistry and that an approval or denial should not be solely based on past criminal convictions. These type of, I'm sorry, these type of restrictions do not apply to all South Bend business licenses. Some examples would be arborist, auto repair, restaurants, and peddlers do not have these restrictions. Also, the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, removed these criminal conviction restrictions from their tattoo ordinance on April 3 of 2017, and St. Joe County Health Department permits them as well but does not do criminal background checks. For these reasons, the city would like to have the tattoo establishment and artist ordinance amended to allow fair and equitable treatment of all citizens which desire and deserve to operate a business in the city of South Bend. We appreciate your consideration on this.
Thank you. Questions at all from the council? And we'll move to the public portion. Anyone here to speak in favor of this bill?
No.
Anyone in opposition? And we'll move to the council again.
Motion to send it to full council favorably.
Second. Any comment? Okay, the motion is made and seconded to send this bill to council favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, goes to council favorably. The last item on the agenda is Bill 6818.
6818, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, approving the City of South Bend's update to the city's 2013 ADA Plan for pedestrian facilities in the public right-of-way and its Title V Plan for nondiscrimination in city services, programs, and activities under the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Aladine DeRose. I am the city attorney and also the ADA coordinator for the City of South Bend. And it is my privilege and honor to end the public meeting portion on ordinances with an ordinance that is an antidote to hatred, and that is a strong public policy in favor of nondiscrimination. And so with this, with approval of the city's 2018 Title VI Plan and the update to its 2013 ADA Transition Plan, this council would be supporting the blueprint of the city, removing barriers to discrimination for those who are disabled in areas of employment and in the areas of city facilities, services, and programs. It's also a blueprint for the city's assurance of nondiscrimination, again, in city services, programs, and activities toward all individuals without discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sex, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, military status, as well as English proficiency or income status. There are two laws at the base of this, of the city's ADA Transition Plan and its Title VI Plan, and that's the Americans with Disabilities Act, passed in 1990, effective in 92, and the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which, page, I believe, which is cited, page 11 of the plan, and which says, "No person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." And even without the federal financial assistance, that is our policy. That is the policy of the City of South Bend. What we have done specifically to create this plan, that is, to what the council has done in its many programs and activities that have fostered openness and nondiscrimination, we've assessed all of the city's infrastructure and determined whether it meets accessibility to those with disabilities. We're not perfect. We don't meet a perfection standard at this point, but that is the goal at some point in time. We are, we have assessed all of the buildings, all of our sidewalks, all of our intersections, and have come up with a rating system, particularly for those, for intersections and sidewalks. And that is that those that serve government facilities are the most, are the highest priority. Those that serve commercial unemployment centers are second priority, and everything else is of lower priority. The time that it will be, that will take to do the rehabilitation that's needed for full accessibility is that we will do it whenever feasible and reasonable, and the timetable is promptly and expeditiously, as is reasonable, taking into account the priority that I mentioned previously. The history of South Bend's plan, then, includes the 2013 assessment, includes a 2015 assessment of all buildings, and it includes a timetable for remedying all buildings and all intersections, sidewalks, and crosswalks. And we will do that as, each year, as the budget comes around, as funds are available, and based on the priorities that are mentioned in the plan. And as, with, with, with the, with great deference given to those having disabilities who request certain changes, we will make those. As to the Title VI portion of the plan, that involves providing hearing devices. It involves a full range of services that we offer to those who are disabled, such as trash pickup next to their homes, relief from shoveling requirements, and attempts to find those who might assist, and on-street disability parking spaces in city neighborhoods. For English, limited English proficiency, the language which is the most frequently used in South Bend besides English is Spanish. That has a 13% rate of use, according to the census. We have a 311 system that identifies callers and identifies their, identifies their language of origin. We've had 760,000 calls since the 311 system was implemented. 2,300 of those were Spanish speakers. We have full translators available from 9:00 to 5:00 to take those Spanish calls. But interestingly, the 2,300 Spanish calls turns out to be a .3 percentage rate among the 760,000 total calls. We, all departments will have iSpeak cards to identify persons that have limited English proficiency, and translators are available with an online service that most city departments have already contracted with. There's a voluntary, in, public, there's a voluntary public involvement survey that will be available at city meetings such as this, and I will distribute those, that's part, and it is exhibit four, I believe, to the attachment form, to the plan. That will identify persons voluntarily who are perhaps not English-speaking, not English-proficient, and it may identify those who are low-income so that we can prepare and plan for those individuals. Environmental justice is also a part of the plan, and that is that we are committing that no group of persons, including racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic, should bear a disproportionate share of negative environmental consequences from industrial, municipal, and commercial operations of the execution of federal, state, or local programs and policies. Translated into English, that means that we will make sure that environmental hazards do not adversely impact those of low-income status or those who have difficulty with managing those types of problems. We have a grievance process, and I'm glad to report that all of our grievances that have come to my attention have been solved informally and promptly through the system itself. And the plan itself has received initial approval by the, by the Department, Indiana Department of Transportation on behalf of the Federal Department of Transportation and also by the Public Works Board at its meeting January 8. Finally, I'd like to say that this plan dovetails with the city's diversity and inclusion plan, but in fact, the diversity and inclusion plan is even broader and more comprehensive because it provides a way of addressing the more subtle forms of discrimination, and those are the subconscious biases that many people have, the use of language that's not inclusive, and terms that don't, that are not, that are not gender-neutral. So with this plan, with the city's diversity and inclusion plan, I believe that we can be the model city for the state of Indiana. And I believe that this strong public policy tells those who would hate that there is, this is not tolerated in the city of South Bend.
Thank you, Aladine. Clarifying questions?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for all the work that you've done. I really appreciate the effort, and it ties into everything that we've been talking about tonight. And you talked about that there was a survey done regarding the different elements to places in the voting that needs to be done. Now, when you came up with that information, you ranked them all?
We didn't, we did not rank them. What we did was, all city service buildings are of the same rank. Government centers have the highest priority.
Well, when you looked, let me put it this way, when you evaluated that situation and you realized that some were at higher levels than others, then do we, then, after we pass this, as a part of that process, do we wait till we get a complaint to make the change? Or since in our own evaluation, we saw it, then we can go ahead and take it to the level of where are we on that?
What we, what we want to do is to be ahead of the curve and to maintain, we know where there's we know where there's deficiencies, they've been identified. That's the point of a self-assessment, is to identify the deficiencies and then to remedy them as quickly as possible without waiting for a complaint. We don't want the complaint. So, in fact, and there's a caveat within the plan, that this survey was done in 2015. Since that time, there have been many changes made, positive changes in these buildings and facilities, and a lot of, probably a lot of improvement. We have not gone back and had the full-scale assessment because we know that Parks, that the venue, Parks and Arts Department is doing some large-scale improvements within the park system, and we want to wait till that occurs. But we think that it will show a big improvement.
Come up, please. Thank you. Any other clarifying question?
Thanks, too, for your work on this. I would like to, if we could possibly look at rounding out the record, you know, you point to the historic funding that's going toward our parks, just most of that, not most, but with, within the neighborhoods, dedicated, directed to improving, you know, something as basic as our restroom facilities, right?
Correct.
And while, you know, it's not, may not have high excitement for most people, it certainly gets to accessibility, right? So, and so I guess I'd like to somehow either enter the record or, you know, tie to this, pin to this, your presentation tonight, that my South Bend Parks website and the list of projects, you know, that we have, as a council, have funded, in fact, given historic funding toward. And then I guess as those are, get accomplished and, you know, checked off the list, you know, why not announce, why not celebrate the completion and, you know, the improvements that are made? And to that point, this council also funded, I believe, if it wasn't, I'm sorry, it was for the 2018 budget, a PR person, a marketing, if you would, within our Department of Public Works. And I think, you know, frankly, no better, in some regards, no better reason, and no better task, if you would, to announce and celebrate as these things come online and get done. You know, why wait till another self-assessment? Let's amplify what we, what we're chipping off here off the list. And then my last piece is, similarly, to round out the record, I know you have included some pieces of the diversion, I'm sorry, is the Diversity and Inclusion Report actually included as a, as an addendum to this document, or supporting? Is it in its entirety included?
Not in its entirety, it is referred to.
Okay. I guess I would like, for our public record on this, because I, you know, that is a very comprehensive document, and it's evergreen, we're working on it, and the council has had the benefit just recently of an update, basically a status report from Ms. Brooks, our Diversity and Inclusion Officer, if there's a way to kind of marry those things in the record. When we have opportunities to approve things like this, and if we can also point the public to, you know, the things that are getting done, the things that we have done, I think all the better. So that's what I'd like to actually ask, that some of these specific things being linked to, or at least at a minimum, are notes, you know, are minutes, discussion on this. So I'd make you two very specific things, the my South Bend Parks and the list of projects funded within those parks, easy to find, and then the Diversity and Inclusion Report. And I guess three, I'm sorry, the update that was linking that record, I think it's just minutes, where Christina Brooks came before the council and gave us a very thorough update.
I don't.
It's something we can do on our end, I guess I'm asking support of other council members for that, if need be, but I think it would help round out the record.
Not contingent upon moving this along this evening.
No, no, I'm full support of it, I just think there's, there's more that we can be telling and sharing.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else care to question? Okay, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone here to speak in favor of the updates to the city's 2013 ADA Plan? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the updates? And we'll move back to the council portion.
Motion to send it to full council favorably.
Second.
Motion made in second to descend council favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to rise and report?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You can actually rise?
Is there something else?
Thank you for all your help. We're guiding by, Craig. Four more to this than I.
Few years, Rachel.
Yeah, that's right.
Full council's now back in session. We will have third reading. Ms. Fowler, would you please give third reading to 5918?
Fifty-nine eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance for property located at 1405 and 1505 East Howard Streets, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broom.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-one eighteen, please.
Sixty-one eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter Seventeen of the South Bend Municipal Code to add a new Article Fourteen, establishing interim water, interim storm, stormwater utility rates, and amending Chapter Two, Article Fourteen, to create a new fund for these revenues to be known as the Storm Sewer Fund Six-Six-Seven.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember McBride.
Nay.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Nay.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Nay.
Councilmember Preston.
Nay.
President Scott.
Aye.
Looks like five-fourths.
Thank you. Sixty-seven eighteen, please.
Sixty-seven eighteen.
Before we go down to five, can you?
Passes.
Five-fourth.
Passes.
Okay. Sixty-seven eighteen, please.
Sixty-seven eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending one subpart each of Section thirteen dash one-twenty-six and thirteen dash one-twenty-seven, Chapter Thirteen, Article Eleven of the South Bend Municipal Code, by removing certain restrictions on tattoos, petitioners, and premises licensing.
Motion for passage?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-eight, sixty-eight eighteen, please.
Sixty-eight eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the city of South Bend's update to the city's 2013 ADA Plan for pedestrian rights in the public right-of-way and its Title V Plan for nondiscrimination in the city's services, programs, and activities under the Civil Rights Act of 1964.
Motion for passage?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolutions, again, eighteen seventy-three was withdrawn by the petitioner. We move to first readings. Ms. Fowler, zero-one nineteen.
Zero-one nineteen. First reading on an ordinance to make at the following described property, north, south alley, fourteen inches in width, running north approximately one hundred and thirty feet from the north right-of-way of Bryan Street and east-west alley.
I move that oh-one nineteen be sent to, hold the books for property vacation for their meeting on January twenty-eighth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Zero-two nineteen.
Zero-two nineteen. First reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at twenty-three oh-seven Edison Road, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move that this be sent to Area Plan Commission for their meeting on February nineteenth, and then back to Council Zoning and Actuation Committee for their meeting on February twenty-sixth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Zero-three nineteen, please.
Zero-three nineteen. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter Six of the South Bend Municipal Code by adding a new Article Fourteen, titled Rental Safety Verification Program.
I move that this be sent to the Zoning and Actuation Committee for their meeting on January twenty-eighth.
May I?
Did that sound?
Yeah.
So, Ms. Broden, would you make the motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, do you mind? Thanks. So, as the Chair of the Health and Public Safety.
All right. All right, Ricky.
No, just responsiveness, in terms of timing and looking at this, what, what we'd like to do is send it to Health and Public Safety to be heard, second reading on February eleventh, second and third, hopefully, reading. And then with the intention of trying to coordinate a hearing, or I'm sorry, a committee meeting, a public meeting, within Health and Public Safety, hopefully on January thirtieth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on nineteen oh-one, please?
Yeah. All right. I move that this one be sent to Zoning and Actuation for their meeting on January twenty-eighth.
I accept that, second.
Sure.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business? Is there any, no, other unfinished business? I'd just like to follow up on the former Vice President Oliver Davis's request that the Utilities Committee please adjourn a meeting soon on council night to get updates on the CSO program. Can we do that?
We'll do that. I've got to cut it up from that, but I'm sure Kieran will be involved in that.
Great, thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Wow, any new business?
Aladeen says she popped up real quick.
I believe that Bill sixty-eight eighteen was a substitute version, and I do apologize for that. It was, it was just one change made, and that was that the, the Public Works meeting was held on January eighth and not on January tenth.
Motion to reopen the council portion?
If that's just a scribbler's error, can we just?
Can we just do a motion to make the changes as recommended by Aladeen the row?
Well, we need to open up the council portion.
Right. Do we need to open up the council portion? Should be said? Motion to open up the council portion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion for passage of the substitute, what's the bill number again?
Sixty-eight eighteen.
Sixty-eight eighteen.
Second.
Can it be built by unanimous, I mean, a commotion, or can we, do we have to go down the line?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Aladeen, for pointing that out. Sorry we missed that earlier. New business, any new business from council? Regina Preston?
Just a reminder, tomorrow night, the Community Forum for Economic Justice will host a forum to discuss the RSDP, the Rental Safety Verification Program, that's Tuesday, January fifteenth, what?
Nothing, go ahead.
Oh, Tuesday, January fifteenth, twenty-nineteen, six p.m., LaSalle Library. This is an opportunity for the community, anybody. We will have testimony from landlords, from renters, and from homeowners in the neighborhood. An opportunity to learn more about the resolution, or the ordinance coming up, and form an opinion, or at least get informed about what we're proposing.
Thank you. Ms. Preston, I know you invited me, I will, I was supposed to travel tomorrow, but being under the weather, I don't think I'm doing any of it. So, sorry, cannot be there. So, Ms. Broden?
Yes, Todd West Management District met again in a monthly meeting today, and we did approve a countywide household hazardous waste fee for the year, contemplated was eleven dollars for the entire year, and that was moved down to nine dollars amended in the course of the meeting, and that would include an exception for Miss Walker residents, as they are already paying by way of their municipal taxes to support the satellite, the satellite location that the Todd West Management District approved and has an ongoing contract now with. So, nine dollars a year on that, and then the recycling fees went from thirty-five dollars approval to thirty, I'm having a brain cramp, thirty-one.
Thirty-one, I hope. Sorry, but that was revised down. I will double-check that quick.
Thursday night is the mayor's night out?
Sorry.
Thursday is mayor's night, and we're at the trial block center.
Thirty-one.
Yep, five-thirty.
Sorry.
So, there's article today about the police department in terms of this diversity. Is there any way that we could have an update with, with the Public Safety to address the findings of that article, to just have a discussion on that at one of the upcoming public, health and public safety meetings? Madam Chair, Broden?
I'm sorry, I did not hear that, but I will check the record on it.
On diversity of the police department. I got a note, I'll send it.
Yeah, actually, I would be delighted to handle that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Anything else? No business. I'm the, Ms. McBride.
On Monday, the twenty-first, all day celebrations for the Martin Luther King Celebration Events, I know the breakfast kicks off at Century Center at seven a.m., and there are festivities going on all day, so encouraging everyone to participate in that event.
Do we have a table?
We do have a table.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none.
I do actually.
Ms. Fowler?
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I do want to clarify that number.
I sanitized your pick.
Thank you.
Ms. Broden, you want to clarify that?
Thirty-five to thirty-four.
Thirty-five to thirty-four.
Revised, revised down.
Okay.
And that reflects three years of work.
Good job.
Ready to retire. Thank you for that.
Okay, we will now turn to the floor. Privilege of the floor, being a new year, I do want to read the press release that we sent out earlier of South Bend. Common Council begins the new year with its first substantive public meeting of the year tonight at seven p.m. Of course, you're all here. Common Council welcomes encouraged full and open discussion of all issues under the jurisdiction of the city in order to promote free exchange of viewpoints, however, it's necessary to limit all the discussion above issues. I'll add a caveat, there are many avenues to contact us council members individually and as groups and as committees. Items on the published agenda are items that are under city's jurisdiction. In some cases, issues raised by individuals during privilege of the floor portion of the meeting are not within the city's jurisdiction. Examples, issues are issues within county, state, and federal jurisdictions, matters of personnel, personal and confidential natures, and matters related to the council member's employment unrelated to the city's jurisdiction, as in myself and manufacturing. The privilege of the floor portion of the council meeting comes towards the end of each meeting, the notice of which is permissible during the privilege of the floor is meant to avoid persons wading through earlier portions of the council meeting, and then being advised that the issue not within the city's jurisdiction cannot be raised or asked to be seated.